Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Coroner Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 12th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In the roll, please.
Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, as every night, we have open time for public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if there's somebody that would like to speak to the commission on something that's not on the agenda tonight, you have three minutes. Seeing no takers, we'll close that section. Having no items on the consent calendar, we'll move directly to our continued hearing. The continued hearing tonight is for 78 Granada Drive. This is a continued public hearing for design review application PL 2018-0080 for residential addition and remodel to an existing two-story dwelling at 78 Granada Drive. Last time we heard this, we didn't have a full house up here on the diocese, so Margaret?
Peter, I wanted to report that even though I wasn't here, I was watching on live video feed from New York. It goes all the way there. And I also reviewed the tape of the meeting again, and I visited the site this past Saturday and spoke with the people involved.
Fabulous. Okay. So we're a five-member commission tonight. Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any declarations they wish to make? Phyllis, you visited the site again?
I visited the site on Thursday with Phil and Martha.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
I visited the site with Commissioner Lee.
Okay. And that was on Thursday, or... Okay. And I visited the site with Margaret on Saturday.
Just to clarify, I believe all you commissioners visited 82 Granada?
Right.
Not the project site, which is 78 Granada, just for clarification.
The point of, for the continued hearing was that we wanted the, to have sight of the project from the neighbor's house at 82. So...
And Commissioner Bandell, you visited which sites?
I visited the site of the applicant's home, whatever number that is.
82?
Just on the outside of it. I looked at the outside of it.
78.
At 78 and 82, I visited the inside of it.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, then. So we're ready to start this off. And who's going to make the statements here tonight?
Will be me tonight.
All right. Fabulous. Thank you, Martha.
Good evening. Chair Chase, planning commissioners. This evening, you'll be considering a design review application for a proposed residential addition at 78 Granada Drive. The addition includes a 1,196 square foot addition, which includes 830 square feet to the top floor. The planning commission considered this project on February 28, 2019. And at that meeting, the planning commission continued the item so that the commissioners could visit the adjoining, the adjacent residence to look at potential view impacts. The commission also requested that staff conduct a follow-up site visit at 82 Granada Drive and to take pictures from both a standing and seated position. And the commission also requested that the story poles be mocked up to show what a reduced structure would look like. The project site is located at 78 Granada Drive. These homes were constructed in the 1950s, and the developer created flat lots that step up Granada Drive. The project site, which is highlighted in yellow, is, sits at a higher elevation than the home to the west, which is 74 Granada Drive. And then the house that is located to the east of the project site, 82 Granada Drive, sits at a higher street elevation. When these homes were constructed, they were all two-story additions that had unused attic space over the garage. And they were all very similar in style. Over the years, many homeowners have added on second-story additions and have also remodeled the houses as well. And this slide shows some of the two-story additions that have occurred in the immediate vicinity. And the most recent was 62 Granada Drive, which was approved in 2017, I believe. And that was an approximate 550 square foot addition above the garage. And it's interesting to note that when the subdivision was originally constructed, one of the side elevations did not have any windows. And on the side of the street where the Gerbers live, it was, that is, the west elevation. And then across the street, it was the east elevation. This shows the, a close-up of the project site. And in 2014, the planning commission approved a design review and a variance application for the adjacent neighbor, 82 Granada Drive. And that project included additions over the dormer and the garage, and also an approximate 500 square foot addition to the rear yard. And in this aerial, you can see the portions of the house which were included as part of that construction. And also with that construction and remodel, the owners of 82 Granada Drive added five, added five windows to the west elevation, which included two on the master bedroom, two in the master bath, and then one on the office on the second floor. On the left-hand side shows the existing site plan, and on the right is the proposed site plan. The Gerbers have three young children, which influenced their decision to do an addition over the existing garage and kitchen. They are proposing to extend into both the rear yard and into the east side yard. And the required rear yard setback is 25 feet, and the proposed rear yard setback is 74 feet, six inches. The required side yard setback is six feet, and 18 feet, 10 inches is proposed. This slide shows the south elevation on the left-hand side. And the two ridges are identified. Ridge A, which is the taller of the two, is over the bedroom that faces the street. And this has a height of 24 feet, 5 inches, which is two feet and 2 inches taller than the existing house. And then the ridge B has a height of 22 feet, 8 inches. And this is the ridge that is closer to the Stolman's residence at 82 Granada. And on the right-hand side, you see the east elevation. Again, ridge A, the top ridge, and ridge B, the lower of the two ridges. And I'll be referring to both ridge A and ridge B throughout the next couple of slides. As requested, the applicant added strings to the story poles to show what a one-foot and a two-foot reduction would look like. And for ease of looking at the pictures and kind of seeing what was going on, staff added highlights to the strings. I would like to point out that we did our best to make sure it is correct. There is some, some human error, and some of the lines may not be exactly precise. So... To give you perspective, this is where the majority of pictures were taken from. This is the master bedroom at 82 Granada. Pictures were taken from both the left-hand side window and the right-hand side window, and they were taken in a seated and a standing position. And this picture shows the view without any of the highlights. And you can see the, the yellow strings were used to show the reductions of both one-foot and then a two-foot reduction. And you can't see the red string, which would be, you know, the, the proposed height. And so to give you some perspective, the ridge A travels from here to here, and then ridge B travels from here and then to the backstory pole, which you cannot see in this picture. The next series of slides are going to show two pictures. It's the same exact pictures, and staff has highlighted the different ridges. So on the left-hand side, ridge A has been highlighted, and then on the right-hand side, ridge B has been highlighted. And again, the red represents the proposed height, the yellow is a one-foot reduction, and then a blue is the two-foot reduction. So these pictures were taken from the master bedroom from the left-hand side window. They were taken in a standing position approximately one yard from the window. And these pictures were also taken from the master bedroom from the left-hand side window, and they were taken from a seated position. And again, the picture on the left is the ridge A, and the picture on the right is ridge B. These pictures were taken from the master bedroom from the right-hand side window, taken in a standing position approximately one yard from the window. Ridge A shown on the left, ridge B shown on the right. And these pictures were from the master bedroom, right-hand side window, in a seated position, approximately a yard from the window. Ridge A on the left, ridge B on the right. These pictures were taken out on the patio area of 82 Granada Drive. They were taken right near the patio table in a standing position. You can see ridge A is on the left and ridge B on the right. And last picture, these were also taken from the patio, seated at the patio table. And on the left is the ridge, ridge A, and then on the right is ridge B. And staff has included the design review findings. And in order to approve the project, the planning commission must make all of the findings. And there have been, staff has received a couple letters related to, to view impacts, so I wanted to point out that Coroner Madera does not have review ordinance that it has adopted. There are a variety of view policies and guidelines which are included in the general plan and the zoning ordinance, and that has been included as an attachment for you. And obviously, when the commission evaluates every project, it's finding three related to views that must be made. And this is a balancing act between homeowner and then any concerns expressed by, by the neighbors. So this concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. That's well executed. So, questions for staff? Phyllis?
Yes, I was with you when you took the photos. And you did not only take photos from one foot away from the window, you took halfway across the room and all the way across the room. And I'd like to know where those photos are and why they're not being used, because they do show different views.
So those were not included in the, in the presentation?
Right. And I'm asking, why not? And can we see them?
I think in assessing, you know, in assessing situation, we felt that the, the best views were the views closer, closer to the windows again. One was approximately a yard away, standing and sitting. I think when the pictures taken from the middle of the room, you just a much, a much less of a view and much, you know, more perspective of looking out. So those are the reasons.
We'll add a couple things. One is that, to your point, when you back away from the window, then you lose any view of the mountains or anything, because the top of the window then blocks it off.
Yeah, and I think...
Well, standing, it does, sitting, it doesn't as much. I mean, the view changes, and...
Yeah, I think, I think obviously, from where you take the picture from, it's going to greatly impact how much you can see out of a window. Obviously, the, you're going to see more wall than window the farther, farther you step back. So I think the point of just being one, like a yard away, about three feet away, would be sort of showing that if somebody is actually wanting to take advantage of a view out the window, they're going to stand closer to actually gaze out the window. That being said, I think it should be recognized that there are other views from inside the room, not just out windows. There's views of inside the house, there's views out the patio. And that's also an important consideration that the commission should be aware of as well.
There was, some time ago, a document or a policy that staff created about photos that you guys would take for, from the interior of the building. And it was a way of, a consistent assessment of photos from the interior of the building so that staff would be the consistent methodology applied.
Yeah, we've drafted, so we've drafted a, a draft sort of policy on that, which frankly, I think we would prefer to introduce as part of a view ordinance, so that we would have a, not only a policy of specific views that are important to consider for the commission, but also a specific way that we would actually bring information to the table. But it would not, so it hasn't been implemented at this point. But clearly, there, there's many different ways to take photos. We just wanted to bring sort of this information to the commission at this point. If we, also, I think we were trying to follow the direction of the commission at the last meeting and using the same photos for consistency purposes, we thought was important, rather than introducing sort of new information at this point.
Thank you. That's right. Okay. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
No questions this time.
Mr. Lee?
So just for the public, I guess, with those reductions, it's one foot per, per line, right? So you show a one-foot reduction and a two-foot reduction?
Correct. So the, it shows the proposed height, and then a one-foot reduction, and then a two-foot reduction.
Okay.
Ms. Bandell?
So when, when you showed those reductions, when you asked that the, the strings be put up in those, was that a decision, those reductions, was that a decision that the staff made? Or was that suggested by?
We actually asked for those reductions in height as a, as a reaction to the neighbor commentary. So certainly, the applicant didn't ask for those. But in consideration of the neighbor, we asked staff to do that, and staff responded by putting those up.
Okay. So that was just an arbitrary number, one foot, two foot?
As opposed to anything...
That was significant, like, this would give this much view, this would give this much view. You just said one foot.
You need to have a measurable amount to, and so just saying, what's one foot, what's two foot? And, you know, beyond that is a re, in my opinion, or it would be, you know, they couldn't build...
I think also...
Oh, so you...
Just a sec, Charles. Just a sec, just a sec. Let me finish with her. So that was established as just sort of a guideline of what that roof peak ridge would be. We're addressing that roof ridge, nothing else in terms of consideration. That roof ridge, ridge is, though, they are where they are in the plans and on the drawings. So beyond that, one or two foot, you can't put that second floor there.
Okay. So you did it in reference to the plan already there?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Also, the, the neighbor at 82 had suggested that a two-foot reduction would alleviate that. And so it was also a test. It was a, it was also to, to explore that option, I think, too.
Check your mic, Charles.
Testing, testing. Hello?
Sorry, I was just leaning back.
Yeah, right. Okay. So you have to write it into the record later.
So what, what I was saying is, is that I believe that the neighbor at 82 had suggested a two-foot reduction would be satisfactory, and so it was exploring that option.
You gotta speak up, my friend. I know. You just gotta speak up. That's all.
Okay. Hello? The two-foot reduction, I think I read from, was a suggestion from the neighbor at 82. And so as a, as a testing methodology to understand what that would be, I think that was also part of what, how it...
We will have a chance to reiterate if that's a fact or not. So...
Peter, also, if it was more than two, you'd have to change the design, which is not something we wanted to do.
That's my reference to the fact that with this design and that ridge, you couldn't lower it anymore without changing the design.
Exactly.
So Peter, just to, to be clear in my mind, that was a viable option of, of dropping it two feet?
It's a viable option from our perspective, yes. We're going to hear from the applicant to see if they feel it's a viable...
Right. If they think it is. Okay.
Got it. Anything else? No. Okay. So with that said, then I will ask the applicant to come up and address what's taken place and what's been on the, in the staff report and so forth, and...
I'm not quite sure how much to go through, because I know you said you saw everything. So don't want to bore everyone, everything twice. All right. Well, this is the Gerber's house at 78 Granada Drive. It, as, as the staff mentioned, it's this original 1950s house. It's one of the few that nothing has been done to, except I think they updated the kitchen cabinets before they sold it. This is the Gerber family, absolutely adorable. And there's three of them. So they need bedrooms, and they'd like to keep their yard space. One of the advantages of these particular lots is they open out onto the Reed School open space. So it's a permanent open space, heavily eucalyptus, but, if that's a verb, but it's still playing fields and green space. So plenty of, this is a kind of a reiteration, I guess, of what the staff did. We've only expanded seven feet into the side setback, a rather modest expansion. There's about 25 feet between the houses, and plenty of light and air between us and our neighbors. This is the proposed addition. To the left is the original, to the right is what's proposed. So we have that seven-foot addition into the east side that gives us a mudroom, gives us storage for bikes and strollers, widens the kitchen, and we're adding more of a dining nook than a dining room, really. Only eight feet deep, because we're trying to preserve as much yard space as possible for the children to play safely. On the upper level, we're claiming the space above the existing garage, expanding into the side yard and into the back, but not into the front. So we have a large room that may serve as a playroom or family room in the future. Master bedroom, one new bathroom, a walk-in closet, laundry. So it's a kind of a Rubik's Cube of an addition, not a McMansion in any way, shape, or form, but it serves their needs. And I have a couple of 3D models. We're adding the porch, more walking surface on the porch, carrying the facial line of the porch across to help bring down the, the sense of the massing. Also shows the, I know, little playful dining room in the back, opening up to the yard with glass doors to make the most of a small space. And it shows the east elevation, which, sorry, west elevation, which is existing and solid. Here's the elevation, similar to what you saw before. We are carrying the dormer of the bathroom across to add light into the entryway. And the, the rear elevation showing the fist, the gable end of the master bedroom and the tall windows to the yard. The blank wall is the walk-in closet. And then showing, we did, after meeting with Mark and Christine, concerns about privacy, changed full-height windows in the master bedroom into narrow, clear-story windows. And that's the existing side. As was mentioned, we have the benefit on Granada of a sloping street, so our first floor plate is already 12 feet below our neighbors at 82. And these are the existing sections. And then this is the proposed, in answer to the commissioners, we, I met with the contractor, and we, and we went over using the, let me, better go to my notes, because I'm stumbling here. Okay. "We appreciate the time and energy the staff and council has spent to fully understand the Stolman's concern. I'm sure if the shoe was on the other foot, we would be equally grateful for your professionalism. For the record, we had no idea that a proposed addition would affect them adversely. Once the story poles went up, we met with Mark and Christine. Their first concern was about privacy, so we reluctantly agreed to replace the two standard windows in the master bedroom with narrow, clear-story windows on the east side. Since our last hearing, we had our contractor come back and add the rope to mark one-foot and two-foot reductions. And I met with the contractor to create this elevation for the front roof section. We're starting with an eight-foot plan, plate height, a 3 and 12 slope, which is the lowest recommended for shingle roof. We're gaining interior space by using a scissors truss. But essentially, if we did a flat roof, we'd have an eight-foot ceiling on the inside. This gives us a one-foot reduction height in the front ridge. We don't like this as much as the original proposal. I feel it's not as elegant as the original proposal, but it is doable." This is another view of the story poles. This is a story pole, again, showing the generous spacing between the two houses. So in conclusion, same conclusion, "We're proposing to update and improve an original 1950s house for a growing young family. We work hard to address the family's needs while following the town's guidelines, and it was approved by the town's knowledgeable staff. Unlike other recent remodels, we are not requesting a variance for the addition, and the proposed house is charming. All but one of our neighbors have expressed enthusiastic support of our project. As you noted in our first hearing, every application should be considered on its merits, and we ask that you approve it without changes."
All right. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind staying right there, and I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have some questions for you. Phyllis, do you have any questions?
I would just like you to clarify something. You talked about taking down the front roof, the possibility of taking down the front roof, one foot, the ridge, one foot.
Perception shows that, yeah. So if you back up to that, that might be helpful.
Well, you explained it, you talked about it, but then you're saying it can be done, but you, but the applicant does not want to do it. I just wanted to be sure I understood what you were saying.
It's possible. We would rather not. I, even from the strings, it doesn't seem to make a great difference in the view. And I think the front elevation is more, is nicer, the proportions are better than the original elevation. It is doable. Two feet is not doable.
Yeah, I agree.
So then, in the elevation slide that followed this one?
Yes.
Is that reduced?
That's the reduced height.
Okay. Got it. So...
You don't have one that shows the two next to each other, the reduced height, the actual height?
I'm afraid I don't. We could go back to... That's the original one. So there's a little more room for the decorative board and batten. The dormer is a little taller, so the bedroom, the kids' bathroom would have a slightly taller ceiling.
And the ceiling height, as it currently is, that, of that particular room?
We had a nine-foot, we'd shown a nine-foot flat ceiling in the original proposal.
Now, if you took it down to the...
To the eight.
And you followed the roof line?
With the scissors truss.
You'd still get that feeling of expanse and openness?
Yes. We, it's a little bit more expensive, I think. I mean, I can't completely speak for my clients, but I think we want to move forward, and we'd be, you know, willing to make that concession. Is that enough? But again, I don't know if that would make enough of a difference to our neighbors for us to jump through that hoop.
So the scissor...
I'm sorry. The rear elevation, we could reduce it by six inches.
Okay.
By doing...
By just doing the same scissor truss?
We currently showing the plate height in the rear at 8.6, and we could lower it by six inches to eight feet.
Okay. Just for the record, excuse me. What the heck is that? Is that to switch over to some...
It goes to, to the Parker Pass.
Never mind.
What was the Planner Pass saying with that, throwing out the...
All right. We'll live with that for the moment. So then, for reference, would you move it ahead then to the scissor and the...
The...
There.
Downward? Okay.
And so you, that's the front room?
Yes.
And the rear room would drop by six inches?
It could drop by six.
Was the, I thought from looking at it that it was really the front room that was what was blocking the hills, not the rear room and the pass...
Are you asking your question, or do you want to look at the slide?
No, I'm asking, if that is so, lowering the front, does that mean you also have to lower the back?
No, we wouldn't have to lower the back.
Okay, that's, I was just trying to clarify.
They, they move independently.
Okay, that's what I was trying to find out.
Good. Dr. Bundy?
Just to clarify, potentially, ridge A would go down 12 inches, ridge B would go down six inches.
Ridge B could go down six inches. If there's no request to do so, we'd prefer to have it stay at an 8.6 plate height. It's a more narrow room, so it doesn't have the time or to follow the slope up to be higher inside. So starting a little higher would be nicer.
With that said, maybe the colored lines are within staff's report, not in your presentation?
I don't have the colored lines.
Yeah, we can go back to that. Charles, do you have any questions regarding this?
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Bandell?
And, and is the proposal to keep the clear-story windows, or...
On the side of the house?
On the side of the house.
That was our first concession to our neighbors. We would be happy to go back to original design, but I'm...
And, and the purpose of the clear-story windows was...
Was for more privacy between the two bedrooms, because they both would have master bedrooms about 25 feet apart. So...
Okay. I have no other questions.
All right. Nor do I. All right, nor do I. Does anybody want to see the string lines again?
I do.
In staff? Okay.
I think it would be helpful.
All right, let's move that back before we go on.
Will there be a time for...
Yes. There we go.
See, Peter, this is what I was saying about, it's really the, I'll call it the front bedroom for lack of, or playroom, you know. That is where the blockage is and not the rear one.
Would you take it to the other window? The next slide, I think, shows the second window. And then you have that one that shows the master bedroom, correct?
Yes, this is from... From the right-hand side window. And then this picture is showing Ridge A, which is the front ridge, which they've indicated they can lower a foot. And then the picture on the right is the Ridge B, which is the ridge, it's closer to eighty-two Granada. And a six-inch reduction would be somewhere in between the red line and the yellow line.
Yeah, and I think in staff's, just to follow up in staff's analysis, if you go back to the other one, there's the real, because of the Ridge B is closer to the house, you're not actually achieving any real additional view by lowering Ridge A, that foot, except for the very front of the house, between the two poles at the very front left side of this image. So if you notice, the difference between the two here is that if you lowered Ridge A by one foot, you're to the yellow line. But beyond the second-story pole there, and you go, switch to the right image, you're still, the ridge line closer to you from this angle, at least this angle in the picture, we're viewing it, would still be blocked by that.
Would you move to the photo taken from the deck, please? That's one, right? And there's a second slide, is that right?
Yes, the seating from the patio.
So in the left-hand one, it's the front bedroom ridge, and the right-hand one is the master bedroom ridge in the rear?
Correct.
Claire, Phyllis?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about this? Margaret?
No.
Okay. All right, so we're done with questions of staff and the report, so now we'll open it up for public comment. So how many people? We have the neighbors who are probably going to speak, and there's another gentleman here who would like to speak. Unless, before, excuse me, before I do that, does the applicant want to say anything themselves besides the architect? Okay. Thank you. Then we will open it up to public hearing, and the three people here who might say something, please step up to the microphone. And since I don't, he's shaking his head, I don't know if he's going to say anything. Okay. So tonight, I don't have my annoying clock with me, so I'm going to do it on my phone, and I'm going to say, "Time's up." So for you guys, please step up or grab the microphone and...
I'm happy to speak, but if my neighbors don't have a complaint...
Well, I don't know that they do. So you guys decide amongst yourselves, please. No, go ahead, please.
Christine and I want to thank all the commissioners for coming to our house, looking at the views and looking at the story poles from the proposed construction. Your work is valuable. We appreciate your time and effort. I've lived in that house for twenty-two years, and when I leave, it will probably be feet first. I've enjoyed looking at the views while I've been there. Our only views are out to the west. We have a nice backyard, but to the north, we have a giant stand of eucalyptus trees. To the east, we have a hillside. To the south, we have the street. Our only views are of Mount Tam and the ridge lines to the west. Those are our primary views. When I came here twelve days ago, I said Corte Madera has view-protection ordinances. I cited a provision from the building code. I apologize, because I could have given better citations. Corte Madera has a zoning code. It's Title eighteen of the Corte Madera Municipal Code. This proceeding, design review, is governed by Chapter thirty of Title eighteen. The scope of design review is in Section eighteen point thirty point oh-two-oh. It provides, quote, "Review and approval shall be directed to the following considerations. Number one, the proposed location of the structure on its site in relation to the location of buildings on adjoining sites, with particular attention to view considerations, privacy, and topographic or other constraints. Thus, pursuant to Corte Madera law, this commission must give, quote, 'particular attention to view considerations.' The purposes of design review are governed by Section eighteen point thirty point oh-one-oh. In subsection three, it says that one of the purposes is, quote, 'to ensure that the location and configuration of structures do not unnecessarily block scenic views from other buildings. There are many ways Chad and Sarah can achieve their desired goals without blocking our scenic views. This proposal unnecessarily blocks our views, so it violates the purpose of tonight's proceeding.' Section eighteen point thirty point oh-seven-oh contains the findings this commission must make to approve a project. Finding number three states, quote, "The project will not significantly and adversely affect the views, sunlight, or privacy of any nearby residences." Google defines significant as, quote, "sufficiently great or important to be worthy of attention, noteworthy. Views of Mount Tam and the surrounding ridge lines are important, and they're noteworthy, so they are significant. I believe the commission cannot make required finding number three, so it must reject this proposal. We want to end this dispute. We want to be friends with Sarah, Chad, and Jan, and we definitely do not want to be their enemies. If the commission rejects this proposal, as I believe it must, then we will work with them. If they come up with something that is sensitive to our rights, we will write a letter in support. But this proposal is insensitive to our rights, based on a mistake, and unlawful."
Do you want to pass it to your wife to finish, or how would you like to do that?
Thank you. I just want to say I've really learned something through this process because I didn't realize you were all volunteers. And so I want to thank you for your support and for your contribution to Corte Madera, because I didn't know that. So thank you for coming to our house, and thank you for the consideration of the ordinances. One of the things in the process that occurred to me was as I read the staff report and as I looked at the pictures and various comments that were made, a true codified process really didn't come through for me. I didn't see where those guidelines were really there. I mean, there were pictures from the top part of my house, the back part of my house, and all around. And that's okay. I mean, we consented for people to come in, but what I felt was that there wasn't a clear guidance for what we were looking at, the primary residence, the bedroom, where we live, and our primary view. Certainly from the upstairs, I mean, as Mark said, he hasn't been upstairs in years. When Phil and Martha were there, they asked to go upstairs. I said yes. They asked about my view up there. I said occasionally I work here, but not very often. And then Martha made the comment, it looks more like a storage room. And I'm like, yeah, that's currently what it is. And, you know, occasionally, we have guests in the other two bedrooms. So that process didn't come through for me, and Martha and Phil were kind to hear me out. And you were kind. I felt good about the process when we left last time. I felt like it was fair. I thought that our concerns were being heard and that you were going to come to our house, and that was nice. And, but the whole thing didn't feel like there were clear guidelines for what is a primary view? What about the ridges? What about pilot's knob and all of those things out there? And it felt a little loose to me, and so I gave some feedback, and I appreciated that. Moving forward, what's unfortunate here is that people really weren't clear about ridge lines and primary views as the drawings were done. I can think of a lot of ways that they could achieve their goals. Even pulling back a little bit would open up part of Mount Tam. I'm just saying, yes, they lose a few square feet, but they could still keep the scissor trusses and all of those things. Maybe we would give the center ridge, but we've never had that opportunity because one time they came over, one time we voiced concerns, they were going to get a survey, and that was the last that we heard before the two weeks of the ridge, of the story poles. So you've been to our house, you've seen where we live, you see that we basically live in the downstairs. You see that our house faces westerly, and you know that almost all the houses going up our street have a westerly orientation. So I'd like for you to consider that and the nature of the neighborhood when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you have to cut me off? Was I fifteen seconds over?
No, it's fine. So anybody else wish to make a comment, please?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Craig Hartman. I'm a neighbor right next door, right across the street, actually, from seventy-eight Granada. I look right across to this house. And I want to thank you, like our neighbors, for your service to this community. I know you spend a lot of time on this particular issue, and I want to thank especially the Gerbers for proposing this beautiful addition to our neighborhood. Full disclosure, in addition to being an architect, I'm married to an architect, the architect of the proposal. So I have nothing to do with the design. However, I have seen quite knowledgeable about what's being proposed here. I would say also that when we also did our remodeling of our house right across the street fifteen, sixteen years ago, we also, in our master bedroom, have a major, major, our whole sort of major signature piece is a big bay window that looks right across at what the Gerber's house is. We can currently see across the house to the trees beyond. And this house, this new design will block that. We're happy for that. Actually, it's going to be such a much more beautiful house that, and frankly, as I think probably most of this room probably attest, we spend our time in the master bedroom in the evening, at nighttime. The views aren't that big of a deal for us. We do have a view of Mount Tam, a tiny one, like the window we've seen here from our master bathroom. That could go away, and we wouldn't notice it. And I think that the important thing here, though, is that this house is designed to meet every single written requirement in terms of setbacks under, it's less than the height that's required, that's allowed for this property. And it is absolutely a beautiful, simple house. We love Mark and Christine, they're great neighbors. They did a beautiful addition to their house a few years ago, and for special circumstances, it steps out, it has a, we all agreed that it should have a variance to step out toward the street. Our other neighbors are not asking for any variances whatsoever. And I think that that variance for Mark and Christine is fine and appropriate. Should that extend to starting to modify other neighbors in their houses for a foot, it's obviously a tiny, tiny tip of the top of this mountain. And by the way, if you looked at the other photographs, you'd see perspectively that as you actually sit down in a space and look through a window this size, the view even diminishes further. So it seems like, frankly, as much as we love our neighbors, a very disingenuous argument. So I would highly recommend that you approve this building and not continue to stretch out this process, which is costing our neighbors money, the contractors, the modest architectural fees to extend this process. And so, again, appreciate your service and hope that you will act accordingly in terms of approving this house. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Seeing as there are no other members of the public in the room, we'll assume there's no other public comment. So we can close the public comment section. We can take it back up here, and does anyone have any further questions of staff as a result of hearing public comment? Is there anything else that you want to ask?
No.
No? We're here?
No.
Okay. So now it's time to consider what we've seen. We've seen the proposals for a reduced ridge, and we have to look at the findings and weigh the two, as well as the neighbors' objections to the design. So with that said, I'm going to start to my right with Phyllis and ask her for her, she wants to delve right into her views, or if you want to throw some summary out first?
Well, I agree with the man who just spoke. It is a very attractive-looking house. And I think I said that to Martha and Phil the day we were looking at the neighbors. Could you go back, I don't know who I still think could, into the house, the windows? Okay, not those, next one, please. I would like to see a compromise where is that front room, the truss goes down a foot. I think it's doable. It does not destroy the design, and I think that's important, to respect the design. And it does give some view, depending upon where you stand in front of that window. And that would be my feeling. As far as the other comment that was made, I say this to everybody who stands up and talks about, but my client or I am not asking for any variance. We're within all the rules, so it should be accepted. No, that's the maximum of things, and that doesn't mean the design is good. In this case, the design is good. But if some compromise can be made so the neighbors can live compatibly next to each other, I would like to see it.
Thank you, Phyllis. All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, this is a difficult situation. Anytime there's going to be a second-story remodel, some views are going to be lost, and the balance that I think we tried to strike is to not have significant loss, that get it to a less-than-significant level. And I'm concerned that even with the suggestions, there's still a significant loss of the view of, you know, significant ridges that Mark and Christine have planned for and been accustomed to. I think that one of the problems here is that the, this really nice house was designed, but it really didn't take into account how it was going to impact the views of the neighbors, and it really should have, I think, addressed that sooner in the process. We've obviously come a long way down the path to what Chad would like to have, but I have trouble with finding three, that I believe that significant views will be affected by this.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Charles?
I also agree with Bob. I do think it's a beautiful house. I do think the scissor truss is wonderful, and I wish everyone could have that, but in this instance, I think it is at the expanse of a neighbor who would not approve of it. And, you know, I can't make finding three based on the design review criteria. And I went and looked at it. I think the photos aren't, they're a method for which we can have public discourse and document what we're looking at, but even more so when you walk around the site and look from all the different angles, there is significant impact. And even at the two-foot, you're just giving them the crest line. So, you know, I mean, even if ultimately they gave you that, I think that's a really good concession, because from certain angles, even then, parts of the Mount Tam view are compromised. And, you know, I just, you know, from what I understand about what I'm supposed to look at and the impacts on the site, I have a hard time feeling like it's okay to approve it and make the findings. But at the two-foot, I can start understanding how that could be successful, but you're telling me it cannot. So when we've had other architects... So when we've had other architects that have come with designs on that side of the hill, you know, we've asked them to relook at the massing completely, and they did. And then they worked with the neighbor. And every time they pushed back on the neighbor, the neighbor would have a good argument, and it went back and forth for multiple times. So that's a choice that ultimately applicants need to make till to the point that we can make the findings. And so until that happens, I do not feel comfortable approving it, so.
All right. Thank you. Margaret?
Well, I'm particularly sensitive to view impacts. And I live fairly near this area. I have two thoughts. First of all, I don't think those are major views of Mount Tam. They're small views of Mount Tam. They're not expansive views of Mount Tam. And the second thought that I had was the windows that face Mount Tam were windows that were part of the remodeling. Those were never planned. And so when the house was first built and when it was first lived in, those views were not there at all. Maybe on the second floor, I wasn't up on the second floor. And then my feeling also is that a one-foot drop, at least, and I told Mark my standing is his sitting, doesn't make much of a difference. I don't, I don't, I don't see a difference at all. Two feet, you know, would preserve it. That being said, you know, it's, it's the view they have and the view they've built. And I can see where, to them, it really is a significant loss. And so as much as I don't think it's a primary view, I can see the significance of it to their life there. And so I don't think I could make finding three without. I do think there could be a concession of the two feet. And I also think that, given the fact that the two master bedrooms are facing each other for privacy, just put up curtains and let them have their big windows.
Okay. Well, I will chime in here, and I think that, A, the design is a good design for the house, for the property, for the neighborhood. I think it's appropriate to put the massing where they have it, and it would be inappropriate to move it to another place without a major reconfiguration. What we get a lot is this sort of design by committee where the neighbors get to dictate a lot, and I think there's a limit to what the neighbors can dictate. And the property owner's rights, I think, are paramount, that they get to do things, and particularly when they are within the restrictions and well below those restrictions. We've had more applications before us with tighter distances between masses and roofs than this one does. Just as a matter of reflection, we've often discussed what are primary views, and we know that in the future, when we create a chart of this, the bedroom windows will fall down the list below living room, dining room, maybe kitchen, front entry, you know. So there's a series of places where these views fall into the hierarchy. And bedroom will be number four or five probably by the time we get it onto a graph chart. And then there are views that are paramount, Mount Tam being the first one of wherever you are. And then there's the long distant views and the bay views. There are other views that other homes have, like Christmas Tree Hill and the Greenberry Hills or to the south, there are all kinds of views. But in this case, they have a distant view of Tam. It would be impeded from a less than critical room for view. They still have a view of the bay, and I think that if the project went to the east at the second floor level, they would lose some of that bay view if it were masked in a different portion of the property. They would lose some of that long view. So I'm of the opinion that the willingness to install a scissor truss and drop it a foot creates a concession that for many of the views, if you're standing, that makes a difference. Granted, Mark does not stand that often, or may he stand in the future more, but I think that the one foot is tolerable. I think that a complete redesign is asking simply too much of the applicant because they've created what they want and they're entitled to it to an extent that I think the zoning code and the building code and all of that permits on this lot. So I think they've done a reasonable job of trying to create a design that not only works for them, but fits in the neighborhood and fits on the lot. And I think they're entitled to a certain degree of this without impinging on the neighbors where frankly, we have many cases of greater impediment. And being that this hierarchy of view is down the list, I, that's where I stand on it. I would be able to make the finding for number three myself. So that's where I stand on it. I don't know if anybody wants to respond to this that was, in either case.
My question would be then, if I hear a proposal from two commissioners about a one-foot reduction and feeling uncomfortable with that, so.
Oh, you had to get to your mark.
Okay, hi. So I hear that there's two commissioners that would feel that a one-foot concession would be enough. So the one commissioner I didn't really, that I would think could help guide the path would be to revisit with Margaret how she feels about that, but.
All right. So what are you saying about your viewpoint?
Well, I think me and Bob have a harder time with that right now. So ultimately, if Margaret can chime in about how she would see, I think it'll guide the discussion about what we, how we resolve the issue.
I'm willing to ask Margaret how she feels about that, what I've said, and.
I think, I think I could go along with a one-foot reduction if that would help matters along, help get the project going. I, you know, I think, as I said, I don't think it's a huge view, one way or the other. I think it's their view, and of course, it's precious to them, and I understand that. But there's a beautiful house that'll be built next to them, and we all have to live with compromise.
Thank you, Margaret. Before I ask anybody else.
Peter.
Okay, Phyllis?
Could you go back to one of the slides that shows the west elevation? I want to see how far the eve stands. Well.
The west facing, the garage front is what you're asking?
The garage.
So that's a drawing elevation of that one?
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
All right, now.
This is the original proposal, not the new proposal?
Right. What I want to see is, the one that shows the south, I want to turn sideways so that the garage is facing behind me, okay? So that's why I said it was the west elevation. This is showing south and east. I want to see north and west.
So you want to see the one from?
What, the side of the house that faces the neighbor? How's that?
Well, that's your, the one to the right is that one. That's the one that faces.
Okay. Okay, if that is what faces, when we're looking at the, I'm looking at B, line B, the amount that that eve stands out from the building itself, you see?
Yeah.
Could that be cut back a little bit by?
You mean at the gable end?
Yeah, at the gable end, over the window, the section of the roof over the window. You see how far out it is from the wall? Okay, go up. All right, now bring it across, bring it down, down. You see how far that stands out from the wall?
So you're saying that?
Cut that back, cut that back over.
Oh, I see, the overhang toward the street. The overhang toward the street.
Could be cut back a little bit by lowering the one foot and cutting that back a little bit. That doesn't change the design, but gives a little bit more view of the.
Phyllis, is, just so I, are you seeing, is this the area?
Right in there, this is what I'm talking, right in there, right.
So the typical overhang now, it looks like it's about 18 inches or something like that, or 12 or 18 inches on the other side. And that, as you, yeah, I don't know.
Is it possible to cut that back a little bit?
Yeah, I think that that's it. My personal feeling, that would be at the expense of some of the architecture, but that would be my feeling about it, but.
I'm trying to stay to the design.
Right.
I don't want to have to, I don't want the applicant to be forced to change the design. But I was thinking if that was just moved back a little bit, the far edge was moved back a little bit towards where that window is, that that might add some space.
Looks like the one that's already there.
See the overhang?
Yeah. If you look where the 22-foot eight is on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
That is the master bedroom overhang to the.
I'm going to about the one behind.
No, let me finish what I'm saying. And it appears that the one to the front of the garage is just ever so slightly more in drawing there. Hard to tell, but it appears to be more of an overhang toward the street, to your point, than that if it were made similar to the, that one. Yeah, maybe. So would that be something you would additionally request?
Like if that will help a little bit of the view, and I don't think it really impedes the design itself.
Okay. All right. Here we are at a place where, go ahead, Bob.
I was asking if Margaret was also suggesting a six-inch reduction in Ridge B.
That is.
The architect referenced that Ridge B could drop six inches. Margaret, would you be an advocate for that as well?
I guess I don't know the impact of six inches. Could we see that?
Yeah, well, in the photographs, it's a difference between the red line and the yellow line.
Yeah, halfway between the two.
It's not a lot, but.
It would be.
I guess, yes, I would.
Okay. She said yes. She guesses she would. So we're at a point where what I see here is what we see a lot. And we got a neighbor that doesn't want the addition, and we got a neighbor that really wants what their family wants. And when these two come together, there's friction, and each side represents what they want. And yet, somebody's going to have to come out and sort of say, you know, I got something of what I want, and the other one says, well, I gave up something. And that's just the way it is. And I think that it's just the story of a town that we see time after time. And I fear that this is going to create a division over there. It's not something we want to see happen. But I see in the language that Mark and Christine are using that it's, they believe in their case, and they believe in what they're saying. Whether it, because you say it doesn't make it so in your arguments, but we have to consider what we hear and see in an objective manner and then come to a conclusion. So, and see if we can make the findings. The problem is that in any community, in most communities, there isn't a hard and fast rule that this many feet, this view, this clarity, all of that. It's really hard to do that, and when you do it, you preclude people from designing stuff, and that's what happens. So the town is never going to adopt something that is so clear that the guidelines are rigidly enforced. There's places in the country where that is, and it takes years to get a simple addition done. I've lived there. It's no fun. So the, I just, I wish this weren't a source of friction, but we're going to come to a decision here, and both sides are going to have to either decide what they want to do about it. And I just wish it didn't end up with enmity or ugly discourse. So with that said.
Could we ask the architect if she thinks that taking that overhang back about six inches is feasible to go with her design?
We would be opening it back up for public comment.
No, we actually wouldn't because the architect is part of the presentation of the applicant.
Well.
You can if you, just a point of clarification, if I may, since you're curious about the eve, just so you know, the story polls are representative of the facades of the building. They don't represent the eve.
That makes it even more so.
Right.
It is, okay.
Yeah, that's, excuse me, if you're going to speak.
Well, no, sorry, maybe important clarification, then you want to get.
Okay. Yes, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the microphone and clarifying what's the story polls represent for us, just to be clear. Thank you.
Because we, it was so stormy and windy, we got permission to put them on the existing overhang. So the story polls in the front do represent the overhang. So they're kind of as far as the overhang would go already because they could attach more securely to the facade.
Sure. The building would not, itself would not be that far over or that big.
Correct. The building itself would be back that existing foot and a half.
Yeah, there's a representation of that. And so with that said, the, it looks like the overhang is about two feet to the front, or do you know what you're?
I think it's about 18 inches.
18 inches? Okay.
So that, you know, that is the full extent of the current of the building that we're proposing. And as you can see, it does give some, I'm just answering your question.
Yeah, definition, so.
Some shadow and texture to the building. Without that, I think it becomes more almost plastic and flat. You want the shadow to bring life to the facade.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, any other?
If I could.
Okay, go ahead, Phil.
If I can clarify, Chair Chase. So the story poll plan that was submitted to us by the applicant represents the walls, the building walls. And I completely understand what the architect is saying, that the story polls, as you see in this picture, were installed on the edge of the eaves, as you can see, as the architect explained, in order for, you know, for better longevity of the poles so they won't blow down. And as you do recall, in my presentation two weeks ago, I did mention that, you know, these story polls are showing in sense a worst-case scenario. It's showing the building larger, showing that in this case, it's showing the building, the new building closer to the street than it will be in reality.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. And when I look at this particular picture with Ridge A, and as it goes to the right slopes down, the story poll to the right there is the line of the building running alongside the building, but it's out at the eve. So.
Correct.
That said, the actual building face is behind it, back at the face of the garage by that 18 inches or so. So there is some room there. So with that said, Charles, do you have any other requests for anyone else to express anything?
No.
Okay. All right. So we're at a point where I would say, we've said what we want to say, and if I entertain a motion for either, a motion to either approve it with these conditions that we've just established, or a motion to deny the project as it's presented, or request for the applicant if they want to continue it. So it would be a Ridge A reduction of a foot, a Ridge B reduction of six inches, as what we've discussed is a possibility going forward. Those would be the two elements of the applicant's proposal as the architect has presented a possible modification. as the architect has presented a possible modification. Are you writing, Phyllis, to make that, or...
I am. My perception is visual, thinks I am trying to think if that six inches is going to make any difference, because the view to me was towards the front and not the back.
So, these are seated photographs, in our original staff report, there were some that were...
These are the standing.
Oh, those are standing, okay. There we go, and the rear yard one.
So, the Ridge, Ridge B is on the right, which is the closer one, which would be the, the six inches that you're discussing right now, and the one on the left would be the...
And I'm saying that...
From red to yellow.
Yeah, the six inches, I don't see making much difference.
No, that was art, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep the integrity of the design and yet open up the view. I think I'm trying to do stuff that's impossible. And that's with two architectural degrees, I'm having a problem, so...
All right, so, are, are you willing to make a motion for what you want?
Uh, I'll make the motion, because I think it's the one that we have the most consensus on. In the matter of design review application, PL dash two zero one eight dash zero zero eight zero for the remodel of a two thousand and seventy-one square-foot, two-story residence, including an eight hundred and thirty square-foot addition to the upper floor at seventy-eight Granada Drive, our resolution number nineteen dash zero one one to be adopted on this date with the following conditions added: lowering Ridge A by one foot, and lowering Ridge B by one half-foot. Is there anything I left out? Okay.
All right. Margaret, will you second that, or...
I will second that.
Okay.
Commissioner Bundy?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Caff?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the Planning Department, and there is a three-hundred-dollar filing fee.
Thank you all very much. All right, we'll have a short break while, um, our parties exit. Okay, so, Adam is gonna fill us in on how we're doing here. So, uh, we're back on, it is eight-twenty, and we're gonna hear about the, uh, Calendar Year 2018 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Adam Wohl.
Thank you, Chairman Chase, Commissioners. This is sort of a, uh, report or a, a presentation I gave to the town council last Tuesday evening, so apologies to, I think Commissioner Lee was there, so he heard this once before. But, um, this is a, a report on, um, essentially that we, uh, every year, uh, the town council is required to, uh, hear and accept a, um, report by staff documenting how, um, how the town is doing in meeting its, uh, housing element, uh, policies and goals and objectives. That report is required to go to the, uh, HCD, the State Housing and Community Development, uh, Department, by April first of each year. So, I provided with you a, a short staff report that talks about, the requirements, uh, and what is in the report. And so, all of the attachments are included in your staff report. Still will thank Tracy Hagerty, who's not here this evening, but she was instrumental in actually putting this report together, so... And, uh, thank you, Tracy, if you're watching out there, which I hope you're not, but, uh, in any case. So, uh, we've, we haven't done this with the Planning Commission in the past, uh, last couple of years, but I think it's important that you get a sort of sense of where we are with housing production in town. And, uh, so, uh, that's what we're doing this evening. As you recall, uh, the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three Housing Element, which was the last, uh, we, that was adopted in, in two thousand and fifteen, it documents, uh, a number of things, but one of the primary, uh, things that goes into that report is a documentation of how the town is going to meet its housing, um, production, um, goals, which is, one, one of the goals is, is housing and production in general, and then there's an actual state, uh, sort of allotment, or it's, uh, allocation, as it's called, in, in terms of the regional housing needs allocation. So, our allocation for the two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-two construction period, which goes along with that Housing Element cycle, uh, was for seventy-two units, um, of new housing, of which twenty-two of units were to be, um, very low-income affordable units, thirteen low-income units, uh, thirteen moderate-income units, and twenty-four above-moderate-income units. And again, this is an allocation, the Housing Element also includes several other policies in it as well that don't necessarily tie directly to these numbers, but are more general policy goals for housing in town. That said, this is, uh, uh, important that we're focusing on these, what is called the RENA numbers here, on page...
Is there another sheet on that regarding the Housing Element? I've just got the graphs.
Oh, apologies, did it...
No, that's the other thing. No, it's, it should be two pages in front of the graph.
One moment, I'll get you one.
Here's what the RENA numbers are.
There's a, back there.
Oh. And you're missing this page also, I guess.
Apologies for that. So, just to start, uh, pick up where I left off. So, this, this last, this last, uh, RENA reporting period, or the Housing Element report for this last year, as you'll note in, in the several attachments, it's actually been beefed up a little bit from previous years in that there's our additional information that is required to be reported to the state. In the past, we were really focused on reporting, um, building permits issued for new housing units. Now, we are including, as a result of some new state legislation in two thousand and seventeen, entitlements submitted, uh, for new housing units, uh, entitlements completed for new housing units, building permits issued, which is still what is you, being utilized for the actual, um, determination about how we are doing in meeting our regional housing needs allocation. And then, finally, there's also CFOs now we're, we're reporting. So, you'll see, that's why they're in these different tables, there's different units, you'll see different information on each of those tables. The key one for the purposes of meeting the RENA numbers, uh, and those goals, are the building permits issued for new housing units. This has taken on some greater importance in the last, uh, year as well, just because, uh, there are some now new state legislation that is tied to, um, how the town is doing in meeting this, these new housing unit, um, allocation, uh, by the state. In particular, Senate Bill Thirty-five, which many of you may be aware of, it requires that jurisdictions apply a streamlined development review process for new housing, uh, production, or new, sorry, new housing projects, provided that that new housing, uh, the housing project itself meets several, uh, criteria. One of the main, and sort of a threshold criterion relates to whether the jurisdiction in which the housing project is located has issued building permits on a prorata basis, consistent with the RENA housing production targets, and that's for each income category. So, this is, two thousand and eighteen represented the fourth year in the eight-year cycle. So, at this point, really, the town should be at fifty percent, uh, meeting fifty percent of each, of its housing production for each income level. And if the town is actually meeting that requirement, then SB Thirty-five will, would not apply to the jurisdiction in that calendar year, or for the next calendar year, until the next, uh, the report is issued. In this case, actually, um, this would, determination of whether Senate Bill Thirty-five applies lasts for the next four years, until the end of this Housing Element cycle. So, I, I included a, a chart on page two of the staff report that shows how, um, the town is meeting, exceeding, uh, the fifty percent, um, production targets for each income category, and therefore, um, that Senate Bill, uh, the Thirty-five, the streamlined development review, uh, process would not apply in the town of Cuernavada over the next four years. A large part of the, um, uh, ability of the town to continue to meet these, uh, requirements, I would say first and foremost was the Tam Ridge project, which in and of itself far exceeded the amount of above, above-moderate-income housing that the town was, um, sort of, I don't want to say required, but sort of, um, allocated by the state process. And then also, made up a significant portion of the, um, very low, low and moderate-income units, mostly the very low and low, uh, income units that the town was allocated to, uh, to build over this Housing Element cycle. But from that point forward, really, what we've seen, we've seen also the, um, in two thousand and sixteen, the sixteen-unit Casa Buena, um, enclave project, um, which had a, one unit of very low, low and moderate-income housing, thirteen above-moderate, moderate, um, income units. And then, uh, other than that, we've really seen an increase in the amount of accessory dwelling unit permits that have been issued, uh, for new housing units. And those really, starting with about, um, I think, one in two thousand and fifteen, one in two thousand and sixteen, three in two thousand and seventeen, and then last year, seven. Um, and that, I think, um, also may continue, and if, in fact, you, the commission just saw another application over at Robin Drive for eight accessory dwelling units in that application itself, uh, and we have about another four or five that we expect to be, um, in the first half of this year, building permits issued for, for those accessory dwelling units as well. So, that's essentially the information that's in the report. There's, um, uh, the Robin Drive application didn't actually get picked up in the tables, because those applications were submitted prior to, uh, two thousand and eighteen. They're actually submitted in two thousand and seventeen, so they didn't show up in the Housing Applications Submitted Chart, but if approved, they will show up, in the next Housing Element, uh, uh, report next year. So, with that, I'm happy to, you know, this is really an informational item, there's no action to be taken by the, the Planning Commission. I think it's, um, just important to sort of understand the broader context in which we are working, and which housing, um, development in town, and how we're, how we're doing in sort of the allocation process, what it means for, from a development process standpoint, and, uh, and still, you know, what this means going forward for the next four years in this Housing Element cycle. I will note that also, the housing projects, both the Tam Ridge, uh, the Enclave, the Robin Drive projects, those were all identified, as we mentioned at the last, um, during the, uh, the Robin Drive, um, uh, application in our staff report, we mentioned that those were all projects that were identified as the housing opportunity sites, which were going to be utilized to actually meet, uh, the, the, um, production targets or this housing allocation, so... We're on track in, in meeting those, um, those stated goals and objectives.
Thank you, Adam, yeah, it's great to hear this stuff, um, and we'll send Tracy, um, flowers. So, uh, that said, this is not really a discussion item, um, this is...
Welcome to, I, I mean, I think there's, there's, it's fine if you have some questions about the report, it's not, it's not for general discussion about any other particular, um, applications or projects itself, but happy to answer questions that relate to some of our housing production goals and targets.
Well, I do want to, myself, I want to ask a couple of ques, questions. Four-seventy-seven Chapman, was that just an ADU, or is there anything else that's associated with that application?
I believe it was just an ADU.
That was it, okay. Then, the report that is in, uh, Housing, uh, RENA Governor's Office of, uh, HCD. So, they have identified other sites in the town in that document that was generated twenty-fifteen, right? There are other properties in town that have some option, properties identified. Potential.
A few, yeah, there are a couple, there is only one other housing opportunity development site identified, that was on Warham Drive.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, that said, then, um, it, is it your intention, or does it make sense for us to discuss at some point, um, opportunities elsewhere in the town? Is there a program for that?
Yes, there is in our Housing Element currently. It talks about starting a conversation, and I intend to do this before this date, but it does start a talk, uh, does talk about, um, a poli, policy in our current housing element about essentially starting the identification process for new housing development sites for the next, sort of anticipation of the next Housing Element cycle, and I think we should all expect a much higher number than seventy-two units in the, in the next Housing Element, uh, period. But, um, yes, it does talk about starting the site identification process, uh, and, and we will be following that policy. And I think, actually, one of the things to come out of the recent state legislation is, is that there will be some grant funding available for jurisdictions and, and to, to take advantage of, of some additional resources to actually start any number of, um, measures, including, uh, site identification could be one of those ways to use that money to, um, further potential housing production in the future.
Do you anticipate that because of the either upcoming or existing state law that we're going to have to, um, acknowledge the intent of that code to, uh, demand housing on certain sites, or that we're gonna rezone?
I don't think we know that now, uh, and there's no way to determine, um, that at this point.
Is it conceivable that the town can create a definition of transit center? That would impact, uh...
I think all of this is a little beyond the scope of the housing report, but the Planning Director can bring, if you want to, um, air your questions so that Adam knows what they are, and instead of responding tonight, so that he or other staff can prepare the responses, I think that that would be a good exercise.
Great, he can just say, I'll answer that elsewhere, but can that be done? Can, I'm asking, can the town define what a transit center is or a transit stop? And you can answer that some other way.
Probably not.
Right. Okay. Phyllis?
Yeah, I had two questions that I think are, in general, to the report. Are we going to look at all of these ADUs as being within the moderate category? So far, they seem to be, the ones that being...
No, they're actually, well, so far, we've actually assigned them to very low and moderate. I think that what we said in two thousand and fifteen, and what's in our existing Housing Element is that at the end of the day, a third of the units should be assigned to the very low, a third of the units should be assigned to the moderate, and a, sorry, a third of the unit should be assigned to the low. So, that's where we expect to end up at the end of the day.
Of A, ADUs?
Of ADUs, specifically ADUs.
The other question I wanted to ask, 'cause I recently saw an article, I think it was in the New York Times. Going back to the fact that about fifty years ago, we saw an awful lot of duplexes and triflexes being built, something we've moved away from because of zoning, and I think there's somebody in the California Legislature who is going to be carrying some bill to try to, you know, you know, these guys have nothing better to do than bring up bills for everybody else to live with. But to look at some of the property, that's single-family dwelling, to see if they can, it can be open to duplexes and triflexes, and maybe that's something for us to look at, I don't know. at. I don't know. But for you to come back and talk to us about the possibilities and how that would work in meeting some of these.
It sounds like, you know, one, one thing we may be able to do, and I expect to do this later this year, obviously, these are, there's current legislations just making its way through the process, so, but when we have a more, a better sense of actually where these are going to land, we can have a conversation about sort of the impacts or the ramifications of some of the legislation that is ultimately going through the legislature this year.
What I'd like to see, if I'm sure you have it through your organization when you talk, McGuire's bill, or what he wants, I'm sure you've got some stuff on that. If you could send it to us, email it to us, I'd like to see it. Save me from contacting his office. Because that seems to be the one that, at least for mayors and council members, that...
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. Bob, do you have any questions for?
Yeah, could you clarify, then, how you determine an ADU is low, you know, or moderate or very low?
Right. So, there, so, I think for all, let me start here. So, we, in 2015, when we did the housing element, and we adopted the housing element, in that document, there is a couple of pages devoted to sort of the, this very question. And, and given the fact that they're non-deed restricted, but they were based on surveys of ADUs that were done in Marin County and other local jurisdictions, and some surveys of advertisements and whatnot, of what the going rents were for some of those. It was determined that ADUs, generally speaking, would end up being affordable at these various different income levels. So, again, a third very low, a third low, and, and a third moderate. There is no requirement to actually, for any homeowner, for example, as to what they actually charge, or if they actually use the housing. So, we don't have precise information or great information on that. It is something that we are looking at, in terms of, maybe it's a good idea to get some better information, or at least get a voluntary survey at some point. So, we'll, we'll be able to, you know, we may be able to sort of get a better handle on that going forward. But basically, at this point, I think what we're, we're doing is using the housing element justification. And I think that's the prudent thing to do at this point, given that we're going through, we went through the state for certification of the housing element. That was certified by HCD, and now we're following through with what we said we were going to do.
Okay.
And if you recall, the current ADUs that are coming through, some of them have conditions for some reporting requirements, so that, you know, we can track that going forward.
So, on page 10, second unit amnesty, on Robin Drive, yeah, they were going to do reporting on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, page 10, second unit amnesty, sort of ongoing. And, you know, the question that I had asked before is if we can document that some of these unregistered or undocumented second units are actually ADUs, does that help us with our RENA numbers?
Only, only if they're, were illegally built. That's, that's how I've, the distinction that I think we've been making. So, there's plenty of existing non-conforming, but legal ADUs, because they were put in place prior to zoning regulations that, prior to having an ADU ordinance, or any other zoning regulations against, that would set up certain requirements for that. If those are, are basically legal, non-conforming, that we don't have any actual permit, or we never actually codified that they existed, but they exist, we don't count them as new units, because they've been in existence, they go back, you know, we, they've, they've been around some in the older neighborhoods of Christmas Street Hill, or on Grove. So, those are not counted as, as new housing units. We, we have done a few of them where they want to just get the proper paperwork and, for resale or what have you, bring those also up to, maybe bring those up to current housing, housing codes. We've processed those, but we don't count them as, as new units. So, it'd only be in the case where somebody actually illegally constructed units, and nobody knew about it. If we offered an amnesty provision, we would, we would be able to, we may get those folks to come in and, and actually count those as new units.
Okay. On the same page, H-3.7B, property maintenance ordinance. I've been to some of the town council meetings where there were complaints from neighbors about unsightly properties, and there's an attempt to get them to voluntarily, you know, do something and clean things up. Sometimes that's happened, and sometimes nothing really happens. Is there an enforcement arm on that, or what's the status of that in regard to the planning department?
Yeah, so, so we have had dedicated code enforcement up until very recently. We lost our, recently, our code enforcement officer moved positions into a different jurisdiction. But, but we have had dedicated personnel for that purpose for the last year and a half or so. Even before that, the planning department, we oftentimes started, this is what happened in 2011, we, we adopted the nuisance ordinance, and so this was sort of enforced through that process. And I'd actually, you know, I think we've had decent success. These are always problems for communities. They're, they're challenging issues to deal with. Property owners have certain rights, and, and so we are careful. And I think that, I think the, at the same time, we're sensitive to neighborhoods and neighbors' needs as well, and their concerns. But it often takes a long time, I'll just say that, and a lot of resources to sort of actually get any substantive progress, or substantial progress on them. But I think there have been several instances of what I would call, you know, success, which is not a total, you know, you're not going to go and totally clean up something, but we've, I can name probably three off the top of my head that are, were the real problem properties, where we've actually gotten building permits for a couple of them. People coming in and actually made them code compliant and safe. I've been personally cleaned up trash from people's yards, so I've, I've got my hands dirty on many of these as well. So, it's an ongoing thing, and, and certainly, it requires a dedicated personnel, though, to, oftentimes, what's required is, is checking in quarterly, or what have you, because the homeowners who have these problem properties oftentimes need to know that the town is there and going to be checking in. Otherwise, it just, you make progress, and then it goes back to the way it was.
Yeah, I learned about that from my wife, sometimes watching the Hoarders Channel, and, you know, finding out how difficult it is to get people to realize that these really aren't treasures that they've accumulated. So, it's a tough job.
It is. And it's, that's what we're dealing with as well.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Charles, do you have any questions for?
So, to touch on the amnesty, you were suggesting, you were saying that that could be a program, but that currently is not a program that we have.
No, not a publicized program, no.
So, right now, we're meeting our numbers, right? Or, and we're going, like, for the next couple of years, we're good, right? So, there's no greater public outreach or anything that would be needed to basically meet the numbers in the current kind of trajectory, right?
I think, I think so. I think with the Robin Drive project, and then as we're seeing ADUs, building permits for ADUs sort of increasing, I think we're, we're going to...
So, there's a lot of self-adoption. It doesn't even have to be kind of incentivized or an educational program yet, but as, as the stock saturates, like in the next round or something like that?
Yes, and, and I think the earlier, the better, in terms of how, you know, how in this second half of this RENA cycle, getting in front of some of the, the next round of sort of housing discussions over where the next round of housing development should occur is, is important. But there is, it's, and I think as Commissioner Metcalfe changed, this can change with legislation that is being adopted this year, next year, what have you. But currently, under the current regulations, I think we're in a good position to not have sort of a, either, you know, a development process hanging over the town that is streamlined, or a, sort of the numbers being driving, driving the, the driving force behind it. I see that as a good thing for a, actually having a productive housing conversation in the community.
So, I think it's great that the public is, like, electing to bring in the stock, right? Do you find that there...
ADUs?
ADUs specifically, right? That the state's enacted that, that they're, that they're, that they're, it was to encourage it, and ultimately, it's being adopted. Do you find that, is, how, how, how are they discovering that opportunity? And is it one type of property owner, or is it across the board, that just all types of homeowners in our, like, you know, like, that have the rights to build it, or are coming from all over the place? Like, I guess digging in that a little bit more.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think it's been, it's been interesting. I do think the state regulations and the push behind changing the rules, and a lot of the press and news coverage that has followed that have, have made its way into the, I guess, the collective, like, consciousness of the homeowner. You know, we've done our best to sort of also provide information and handouts of our own process. We've obviously had ordinances come before the commission and passed by the town council that have, I think, been supportive of ADU development, so that's been helpful. You know, so I think there, those efforts are continuing. I know there are counties, and there's been counties around the Bay Area that have put together really good websites that sort of talk about how to make your way through the process, but also sort of off-the-shelf designs and types of things, and cost calculators and things like that, that help that, again, get into the collective consciousness of residents and homeowners, that, that may be a possibility, and it's easier than it may be it used to be. We are seeing a lot of people, I think, for the variety of reasons that we've talked about in the past during our ordinance discussions, for example, of extra income, others for relatives or family members doing, taking advantage, others are finding that the reduced parking requirements are helpful in actually getting a new ADU built. And so, there's, there is a really a variety of ways that people, and we are seeing it in all, all neighborhoods, really, from the flats to the hillsides, to the, you know, to the older neighborhoods and the newer neighborhoods. So, it is pretty cuts, cuts across, I think.
Good to see you're so aware, and it was a good comprehensive answer to my question.
Yeah.
So, thank you. So, then, I guess one other question I have about ADUs in particular is, you know, I personally elected to do the California Energy Upgrades when that program's offered, and incentives definitely made it easier to adopt that type of construction. At the state level, have you ever heard about incentivization of ADUs? Not just making it easier to permit, but actually, like, rewarding to, to try to build that stock?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Didn't want to use a hammer. Ms. Bandell, do you have any questions regarding this?
Could I ask one further question? We went over the ADUs, what about, I can't remember the name of them, the smaller than ADUs, the junior ADUs, do they get counted into?
Well, they do get counted, but we haven't seen people taking advantage of those. We haven't seen an application at this point.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out that there are several within 2,000 feet of my own house, and I would implore everyone else here to find somewhere within 2,000 feet of their own house, to just bring the stock up. So...
About the ones that are...
On the chart, right. So, you know, you think that there'd be plenty of people out there wanting to create any source of income in their home, but I think you've created quite the option. Is there a timeline for a zoning ordinance change?
A little off-topic, but we're happy to answer. That's, sorry.
Only because it's in here, and there's so many things on the chart that say zoning ordinance.
Well, we did it once already, so, but we are planning on coming back, actually. Martha was here, she's been, she's been leading that effort, but it's cleanups and definitions. We're looking right now at around June. It could be, you know, just given the rest of the calendar and the other ordinances we have to get to before that, but...
So, they're the professionals, but if you guys have anything that's on this list that you want to send to Adam, you know, thoughts and comments, so, I trust that they'll have a fabulous program. Okay, so, everybody done with this? Feel good about it? All right. Great. So, then, let's move on to the first time in many weeks that we actually get to go out and finish an agenda. So...
I would like to move the minutes from both dates.
They're, they're last, but first, we got to hear from...
Oh, okay. I was just going...
Mr. Lee about the last council meeting.
Yeah, so, we went over what Adam just presented. I think for the planning commission, that's primary. I think another good discussion was the parks and rec fees and general status. I think I was really impressed. Todd Kuzma has been able to bring it into, you know, a good fiscal place, and reduced overruns in, in previous budgets. And I think it was really good to hear that, because I hear it a lot on a, a lot of different parts of the town, kind of, projects. So, then, the other one is, is there was discussion about, and that was approved by, and then, there was also discussion about, in that in particular, was the ways that the, the rec center's being used, and the different groups that are using it, and trying to protect and balance, you know, our budgetary needs with the needs of the public and the different groups, that, you know, that there's kind of a sliding bar, which is nice to know, that it's, access is, is not just based on, you know, whether you can afford it or not, but ultimately, you know, the use value within the community. So, I enjoyed that discussion and felt it was very fair. And then, also, you know, they, they talked about the merging of the joint fire, and some of the implications on staff. And there was a lot of good discussion about some of the staff in the town and their contributions, and I thought that that was a really good discussion as well. So, that was, those were my takeaways from it. Yeah. And then, one other report that I just want to make is, currently, the Cordero Madera School District Fundraising Unit Spark is having a auction. There's really great product that's being offered, and experiences and everything else, and you're doing the schools a, a great service if you participate, so.
I do have a question. When it comes to the rec center over there, what is the highest use, or is there something, anything that's suffering that they will want to take away from the current program?
Well, so, the, the main discussion was on the NRGs, and, and how we've actually opened it outside of Cordero Madera to the kind of whole basin of, of different NRGs to use, and I don't think that, in the past, that they were assigning fees to that, because they have no budgets. But then, they also have bigger collective group events and that kind of thing, so they, they were trying to negotiate how to accommodate that, because we had made commitments to that. But ultimately, they, you know, the, the, the demand on the space, and then the amount of space that they were really utilizing within that, and then the timing on that, were some of the discussion points. I think that was the biggest one. You know, there was a lot of discussion about the intergenerational center. I think Carla really wanted to make it clear that that's a volunteer, like, nonprofit, and so, fees that are allotted to that are, are donations to it, and aren't going to the park and rec. But that they had seen wide adoption and good membership, and, and they really see that as a good addition to the, to the community. And then, yeah... And then, yeah, I didn't, I, I think that they're also exploring other ways to keep it just, you know, filled up and, and, you know, make it, make it so that it's affordable, so that ultimately, it isn't a very expensive venue for the public to use, so, but still pays for itself.
Great. I would only like to, may I have a brief statement about the Town Hall Design Group? Right? And we met here, was it only last Thursday?
I don't think so.
Is, anyway, so much has happened. It had to be two Thursdays, yeah, right. And, but the next one is for this Thursday?
Yes.
Yes, right. So we're going to have the next one this Thursday. All of the requested people showed up, including Mr. Harlock. The architect was there, and they just wanted to discuss what the program was and hear some basic commentary. There was a division between Mr. Harlock and some other members of the group that felt this was an acceptable and good location to reuse, and he felt that an opportunity to look to the park and other locations would be an appropriate task for the town to take on. And there was discussion about Park Center down there, and what was going to happen with that, or what should happen, or what might happen. And Todd consistently replied that he had looked at many of the cost options and many of the possibilities of that, and he said, it all circles back to using this property in his mind, but he was still open to those possibilities. But I think what came out of it was that instead of just designing a building to house people here, that the entire property, including how it relates to the post office, how it relates to the building next door, how it relates to the fire department, all be taken under the wing of thought, right? What does it all look like? Is there a way to make it all look cohesive or not? And can it all fit here? And Michael wrote a follow-up letter saying he still thought that using parkland across from the fire station would be the best approach in creating a new identity over there. And Adam, you can...
He also stated that as new business during the council, but I didn't know.
Peter?
Yeah.
Isn't the parkland owned by the school district and not the town?
I don't know that.
A little bit of it is, around the school.
Go ahead, Adam.
No, that's all right, I think it's under discussion on each of the report items.
No, just...
So, it, it...
He answered the question.
It, yeah, you know, and there were a few people that thought that the use of the park would be to the detriment of the park. That's about, that's about it. So, anyway, highest and best use of the different town parcels. So, Mr. Wolf, do you have anything you would like to contribute to reports?
No, I, the only thing, and I think I mentioned this last time, but we did, I think we're out the door, the, the Amy's building permit is issued, so I'll be, we'll see some activity over there very shortly.
I saw the firemen training a little bit ago.
Yeah. So just, just be aware if you start seeing some, not explosives, but, you know, they'll be taking that structure down pretty soon.
You have to drive by every day.
Excuse me.
Was there a schedule? Do they usually provide a schedule with building permits?
Yeah, that's, well, not necessarily, but yes, there will be, we have to have a, we'll have pre-construction meeting after.
Have they identified a kind of dates?
Not yet. I'll, I'll, I can report back on that. I know everyone gets hungry when I mention Amy's.
Right. Up and down the corridor asking when it's going to be...
They can't do anything before April 15th to start, so they can go over there, they could burn it down and do whatever they want to do, but they can't start any grading until after that date. So, that's great, yeah. And then I see that next week, is that really going to happen?
Next week?
Which one is it? Sorry.
159?
It's, it's tentative. I, I still, it's tentative at this point, I don't...
Okay.
There have been discussions about following up on the commission's direction to provide the information that was requested, so I'm, I'm still waiting to see if that's actually going to be provided or not.
And we got an email from the neighbor.
In time. Yes.
All right, then. Anybody have anything they want to request for in a future agenda? You know, I'm going once, going twice, going...
Well, I, I was going to write something up, because I had some ideas. Is that, that's, as I understand, that's the preferred way of doing it?
I'm sorry, for...
Future agenda.
Oh, yes, that'd be great, yeah. You submit it to me, and I'll bring it forth in the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, I, the other, I just lost my train, oh, I should mention, we did get an appeal filed for 360 Corder Madera. That was just happened today, no, yesterday. But we didn't, no other, no appeal for the Lakeside project.
360?
That was the variance with the garage.
With the garage, okay.
It's the neighbor that was, can you talk about him?
Attorney.
Right, of course it would be.
It's up, but that will come to the council on the April.
And...
Likely in April.
AMCO will go before the council, when?
We're looking at April 2nd, at this point, yeah, likely, again, tentative.
So, regarding the minutes, we have January 22nd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Voice vote?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay, okay, you have an adjustment to make?
I do.
Okay. And it's not approved, so...
It has to be amended.
It's a hold your horses.
Right. What would you like to...
Well, on the first page, it says that Commissioner Bandell stated that she had met with the manager of the Village Stan Hoffman.
Oh, no, she talked.
I did not meet with him. He called me up on the telephone.
Okay, so it should be, she had a call from?
That's right, I had a call from...
Any other corrections?
Nope.
Should that read lobbied Margaret Bandell?
No, that's a little strong.
Okay.
It would give the appearance of, you know, impropriety.
Is that the only one?
I don't know. Is that the only one, Margaret?
Yes.
Would that change? I move to approve.
I shall second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, then we have the commission meeting notes of February 12, 2019.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Any modifications to these proposed by anyone?
No.
I hear none, so that would mean that there are four of us that can approve regarding Yeah, that's it. I think we can, she's 159, that's it. So Ms. Bandell was recused, so we, the four of us, are you and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
One abstention.
Margaret Bandell.
Yep.
Okay, with that said...
Move to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.